Thank you, Christina. So I'm gonna call to order the Highland Park Board of Educational Occasion Virtual Regular Public Meeting of August 1st. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we do the roll call, please?
Ms. Kasaldon?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty? Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden D. Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mr. Rizlevich? Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Are we expecting Mr. Rizlevich?
I thought I saw him.
A minute ago, he must be having some trouble.
I see him.
He's here.
Okay.
Okay, can we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We have a flag?
I think Dr. Nicosia is working on it.
Oh, okay.
Although it looks like she may be frozen.
Yeah, she's like she's having some trouble.
She is frozen. There's a flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kasalowski. Okay.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to have Christina unfrozen before we start up again.
I think that she made me the host and has logged off and probably will be logging back.
Right, right. Let's give her a few seconds. Yep, she just, yes, she, her internet dropped and she's logging back in. I just got a message. Let's give her a few seconds.
Sure.
I saw something. No. All right, let's, let us move on. She'll, she'll get back in. So we had one communication from Jen Voorhees on July 26th on the subject of swim instruction in Highland Park Schools. We have minutes of the July 11th meeting, and that, this is a voting meeting. Uh, the, so we should, I, I'd like to move this. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of the July 11 virtual public, uh, regular and executive session meetings. Could I get a second?
Dr. Nicosia is back.
Oh, she is. Great.
Sorry. My internet dropped me off. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I'll say, I'll second Mark.
Thank you. Um, do we have any discussion on that from the board? Okay, so Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Casaldon?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger? Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Are you, you were able to mute iPhone?
Somebody mute that iPhone, please? Whoever is co-hosting.
I can't mute it.
Oh, here it's muted. And there's another one that's not connecting.
Okay, continuing on, Ms. McFadden D. Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
He keeps popping on and off. Oh, there you are.
Rob, can you hear us? Oh.
He cannot hear you.
Your audio is out. Oh, he voted yes.
Okay, that's a yes. Okay.
That's a yes.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to the superintendent's report. And Christina, I, I didn't think you had a report this week. Is that correct?
Correct. No report this week.
Okay. So we're gonna go on to the, um, to the board reports and recommendations. Then we're gonna have a comment, a public comment period, and then because this is a regular meeting of which we'll have a second one later in August. Um, there will be votes, number 10 on the agenda, there'll be votes on all of the issues that have been, that have been discussed. So, um, Michelle, could you go over the curriculum and instruction agenda, please? And you are muted.
Okay. Um, I have so many windows open. I can't find the agenda. Hold on just a second. Sorry. Okay, so the, um, curriculum and instruction items are, number one, approval of the revised job description, twenty-six seventy youth safety specialist. That's attached. Number two is the approval of the Highland Park Public School District's twenty-two twenty-three strategic plan as attached. And number three is the approval of the middle school emotional regulation impairment program. And that is for the middle school twenty-two twenty-three school year.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Any board members? Okay, seeing none. Um, Monique, do you have anything to report this evening?
Uh, nothing new. Our next meeting is next one.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I'm doing the finance and facilities.
It's August already. Sorry. I meant to say later this month. I was just saying later this month or in August.
Um, so I'm doing the finance and facilities. Uh, we have, um, bill lists for June. We have cafeteria bill lists for June and for half of June and half of July. We have travel, a number five is travel and related expense reimbursement reports. Number six is approval of contractors. Uh, and they include, there's a, well, it's not too, too large a number. Society for Prevention of Teen Suicide is doing, is doing some work in the district, um, at Bartle and Irving. Um, uh, we have, uh, family enhancement. Um, and I, I've forgotten what the NHA was, Christina. I know we went over this. Let me, let me move on and we can get back to that. The Commission for the Blind and Visually Impaired will be doing some work in the district. Um, Public Cover Educational Consulting, that's Mary Pat, will be doing, uh, consulting for in district behavioral programs. Uh, we're appointing St. Peter's University Hospital for School Medical Officer Services. The Institute for Multi-Sensory Education is doing a training for teachers on Orton Gillingham and phonological awareness services. Um, SD Game Day LLC is doing athletic training services. Um, NJEA Teacher Leadership Academy is doing a workshop for Irving teachers. Um, and our school today is doing facilities, scheduling, and maintenance work orders. Um, that's something new so that we have a, um, a more serious work order system than what we've used in the past. And also this costs less money. Number seven, um, is the approval to accept, uh, the twenty-two long-range facilities plan as, 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 um, required by the, uh, Department of Education and approved DMR architects to submit the plan to the, to the Department of Education. Um, agreement, uh, number eight is agreement with the, um, Furcal Graduate School of Psychology at Yeshiva University to provide counselors. Um, and I, I believe this is a, um, uh, a program with some of their students coming in to help us. Um, number nine is approval of the Bartle Elementary School mural. Number ten, uh, is approval of fundraiser for the class of nineteen eighty-two. Um, they wanted to do a, um, a fundraising which involves, um, personalized paper bricks. So they'll be selling personalized paper bricks and they'll go down on the walk at the Highland Park, uh, High School front entrance. This has been done successfully at lots of other districts, uh, all over the country, and we met with them. Uh, we met with the representative of the class of eighty-two where they're trying to raise a, a significant amount of money. Um, uh, oh, in memory of, um, Willie Gerson, who was a student here and a classmate of theirs, um, better known to us as, um, uh, his last name Pazimont, so, uh, it's a family in, in town. Um, number eleven is acceptance of athletic equipment donation to the high school at the value of a hundred fifty dollars for, uh, practice activities from field perimeters for First Tech Challenge. Number twelve is approval of the school breakfast prices, um, going from a dollar to a dollar-ten a per meal at all of the schools, a dollar-ten and a dollar-five at the middle and high school. Um, that would have gone up more except for the, um, money we've gotten from school meals uh, from the state and federal government. Um, uh, number thirteen is reimbursement of twenty-two-one, twenty-two, um, non-public school transportation costs. And we're, we'll vote to, um, uh, the vote will be on accepting reimbursement of more than, uh, twenty-five thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, uh, fourteen is to, um, uh, move that money, uh, that seventy-five thousand, six hundred ninety dollars uh, from unreserved fund balance, um, uh, to, uh, the, uh, Special Education Transportation Fund. Um, number fifteen is to accept, uh, the twenty-two-one, twenty-two extraordinary school aid. Um, this is the, um, special education's, uh, school aid, um, and they, uh, they are, um, uh, they have given, they are giving us eight hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, which is, in fact, the most we've gotten in many, many years. Uh, this is, um, uh, this is, uh, much more percent funding than we've gotten in the last, uh, seven years I've been on the board. We, and in fact, this year, I think we budgeted six hundred thousand. We didn't expect the full funding. Um, and then number seventeen is to purchase Promethean interactive boards, uh, at a cost of, uh, just under two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the, and the fund, the purchase is funded from ARP SAG grants. It's not costing the district directly any money. This was the third round of, uh, of grants from the federal government. So this is fantastic. We're getting all of these, uh, these, uh, uh, programmable whiteboards, uh, and, and be able to put them in so many classrooms. So that's the finance report. Do any questions or comments, please? Okay. Oh, Chris, I didn't see your hand. Uh, there you are.
Yeah, I, I, I guess what struck me looking at the bill list was, was all the transportation costs. Um, is there any update about, uh, are we spending more on that than we already saw the big increase this year?
Um, I haven't, uh, looked at the list. In fact, I just, the bids just came in, so, uh, the bill list is probably for last year's transportation costs.
Right.
Um, so yeah, as, and as you know, they were extremely high last year. I don't foresee them going down necessarily. I mean, there's still the driver shortage. And with the gas prices, even though they've come down a little bit, they're still much higher than they were even a year ago. Um, so I think it's historical, not perspective.
Yeah.
Because the, I think the bids just came in today.
Right. That's also relevant for the communication that we received as well, right? Because we would have to transport the kids to the swim lessons if we did something like that. Is that gonna be discussed further at one of the committee meetings?
Um, I will defer to Dr. Nicosia. I don't know that we have any concrete information about what programs are being offered and whether they include transportation or not.
Yeah, we, we don't have any information. So once I get more information, we can bring it to committee for review.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, the, the, uh, the transportation keeps costing more and more, both for the, uh, students that go out of district, special education students, uh, typically, and also for the, um, sports. Um, they've kind of doubled and tripled, and a lot of that was the effect of the pandemic, but they were going up before. It was very, very expensive and it's continued to rise. So it's a problem. On the other hand, they did fund us more. Uh, this funding we just got was significantly more than, uh, we've gotten, uh, in the past, so maybe that'll take the edge off some. I don't know.
Mark, I think Anne had a question.
Anne.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, about number sixteen. Partly, I just didn't understand what was happening. So the extra extraordinary aid is going. What's, what's the, the reserve fund balance is going to the unreserved?
If I can explain, this is, uh, it's a terminology, uh, confusion. Each year, we apply for extraordinary aid, which are the costs of the special ed costs that are above what the state considers to be average costs. The application doesn't go, go out till May or maybe even June, and so we don't get the award, you know, the state aid for this until after we've already finished our year. And because it's coming in so late, this is one of two. Well, actually, it's gonna be a new one, but typically every year, there's two, what they call waivers, where they don't make you just throw it into excess surplus because the year's over. They say, well, we'll let you put that money into the subsequent year's budget. Um, and if we hadn't budgeted anything in anticipation of getting this aid, we would put everything in, but we anticipated that we would get six hundred thousand. So the extra money, it won't have to, it won't have to lapse into surplus. The state allows us to appropriate it, basically increasing this year's expenditure budget to allow us to spend that money. So because the costs were special ed related, we typically will appropriate it into a special education area. And we know that our out-of-district tuition costs were budgeted extremely tightly this year, so this is the appropriate place to put that money because we think that's where we're going to need it. And the same, the same thinking goes with the, um, the non-public transportation aid. After the year has finished, the state gives us additional money for transporting non-public students. And so we, and we know our transportation costs are gonna be very high, so we appropriated, basically increasing our transportation budget for that amount. These are permitted waivers that the state allows us.
I see. Thank you, Linda. Um, I guess I didn't really understand the whole religion reserved fund balance and the but I, I, you know, that is not necessary for me to.
But that's, that's terminology that we have, we have to, we have to word it that way.
Got it. Um, and are we allowed to appropriate the excess extraordinary aid to other purposes or is it only?
Yeah, last year we put it toward the field.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, just, just checking. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my, my apologies for not explaining it, um, better, uh, which I could have. I just glossed over it. Sorry.
No, no, I just, there's stuff I never really ask questions about.
Yeah.
And I knew that it comes at the end of the year or beginning of the new year, but I wasn't sure exactly how it works and what we can use it for.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah, it's really a windfall. It's, it's, it's very good, although the, especially again because of the pandemic, the special ed costs and the special ed transportation costs have gone up significantly, unfortunately. As everywhere.
You said something about whiteboards too. I'm sorry, I just missed that. You were talking about programmer. What is that? Oh, oh, I said number seventeen. I'm sorry. I was just thinking of two in my head. Got it, got it. Never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Looking. Okay, with that, then let's turn it over to Chris, um, Personnel and Communications. This is actually a very long list.
Yeah. Uh, so we, we met last week and, uh, we, we, the, the main item of discussion was Dr. Nicosia's recommendation about the, uh, student, uh, the, the SAC position, which is item ten on the agenda. And, uh, the relation with the Dean of Restorative Practices position where we had a resignation, um, earlier in the year. Um, so we, we had some communication issues with that where I think not all board members really realize the consequences of the SAC approval that we did earlier. So Christina, would you like to maybe ju- just go over quickly what your recommendations are in that area?
Sure. So we revamped at the previous board meeting, the Student Assistance Counselor. So it, back in the day, the job description was substance abuse counselor. And so, um, we, as a leadership team, reviewed the current job description and modified it for approval last meeting to be Student Assistance Counselor. So they would do some work with, uh, the substance abuse counseling that we needed in terms of the, the large-scale, um, impact that we're seeing on vaping and, um, substance abuse. But in addition, we do recognize and understand the value of the work, um, and continued work for restorative practices. So the, so they would be a Student Assistance Counselor to, to work in, in both areas. The person that we're hiring or, or I, I would like us to hire, uh, my recommendation has uh, seventeen years of experience, um, doing this type of work that includes, uh, student leadership groups. So pulling students together to provide mentorship to other students, um, at all varying grades between, uh, elementary all the way up to high school um, and work with small, uh, groups in, in restorative type of ways. So maybe not specific restorative circles called that, but in ways where there's a lot of group, uh, group work and, and student-centeredness in terms of them leading groups and offering peer leadership and support to others. So, um, we're looking for, um, that person to continue the, um, restorative work, um, peer leadership work, um, and including, uh, working under Elizabeth's leadership and mentorship and with the municipal alliance to provide substance abuse counseling as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mark, did you, did you want me to pause and see if there are any board comments just about that item before? Because the rest of the agenda is so long.
Um, that, that would be fine. I, I did wanna make one comment or, or a question myself. Um, and this position will not be strictly, um, high school. Right? This is a district-wide position. Um, and I think I understand this will be reporting, uh, to Elizabeth at the teen center. Is that correct?
Correct. So it's a district-wide position, uh, K through twelve, and she'll be reporting under the Supervisor of Counseling Health and Wellness.
Got it. Good.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just make one remark before I ask if any other board members have comments, which was, it, it was discussed at the, uh, the June thirteenth, uh, executive session. Um, it, it might have been a little bit rushed. I, I just wonder in the future, in, in situations like this, where hiring one position means that we can't hire another, uh, whether there's some way of, of making it a public, uh, agenda item just for discussion, not, not for a vote. Um, anyway, um, any, any comments?
Um, Monique has her hand up.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Thanks. Thanks, Chris and, uh, Dr. Kozia. I, um, yeah, I'm, I am one of the board members who had some concerns about, uh, just not being fully aware of the plan to, um, essentially sort of consolidate the work that was being done by our Dean of Restorative Practices, um, with this new position of a SAC. Um, SAC coordinator. I do believe that, uh, we, we certainly will been, our students will benefit from having that SAC position, so I'm supportive of that, certainly. My concern is just that, uh, there has been a lack, as far as I can tell, of evaluative data on our, uh, restorative practice, uh, program and work, uh, which frankly, prior to the pandemic, was still in its nascent stages. I believe we instituted the Dean of RP role in early twenty-nineteen, perhaps, um.
No, much earlier, Monique.
I know was instituted when I came on the board and I came on in two thousand eighteen, so, um, I'm not sure if I'm missing out on something, but I'm pretty sure when I came on board, it was relatively new. Is that not correct?
I think that when the state passed the law on, uh, HIB reporting and the number of HIBs were so high, that's harassment, intimidation, bullying, um, that, um, Scott moved forward, um, Dr. Taylor moved forward to, um, to establish that dean position, I believe initially Marine Rexer, if I have the name correctly, took the position, um, and then resigned, and then, um, uh, the, um, uh, Juliana, uh, uh, took the position, um, and then she re- recently resigned. Um, and, um, I, uh, I, I think we do, uh, but to answer, one thing I did when I was looking at this myself, because I questioned it, um, if I may, I looked at the data, Monique, and the, 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 um, restorative practices, which people have been trained in all around the district now, um, has, must have had some effect, because I compared the, um, restorative, uh, the HIB numbers um, um, to, uh, pre-pandemic years. And the number of HIBs is significantly down from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen nineteen, um, in this last year. And the number of, um, uh, incidents, uh, which corresponding to substance abuse are significantly up. And you can find that in all of our reports we've had. I spent a few hours on this. So it's pretty clear we need much more, uh, because I think so many people in the district are trained in restorative practices. I think we need much more help in, in the area of, uh, uh, and I'm not, I mean, it's not for me. The, the administration, um, and the administrative team thinks so, but I think we need much more help in, uh, in, uh, substance abuse counseling, especially vaping now. And marijuana is becoming, you know, kind of becoming legal. I guess it is legal. I think we need more help there. So I, I think this is a, a good move.
Thanks. I'm just gonna finish. I do, I don't disagree with the fact that, um, certainly substance abuse, mental health issues are, um, is a huge area of concern and need in our district. Um, and I can't, um, thank you for providing that historical background on when the Dean of RP role was initially instituted. I know when I came on board was when Juliana Luss, Lussner moved into the position and that at that time, it was really, um, presented as this is where, you know, kind of getting this program up and running, trying to, again, train more staff, have this person who's really energetic and, um, you know, interested in implementing it along with the other tools in our toolkit, um, which I will say, at that time, we were, our discussion and focus wasn't necessarily on HIB, but it was around the pervasiveness of discipline disparities in our district, which is still, uh, which has not improved. And we look at the disparities of, uh, discipline across, um, racial demographic groups and, uh, students with disabilities, right? So that those groups of students are still disproportionately, um, receiving out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, and other disciplinary infractions. So that was another reason why, you know, restorative practice was really brought in, to my knowledge, based on, again, when I came on board. Um, another reason why we wanted to bring or enhance and boost and strengthen our restorative practice work. And that was to address, you know, these disparities, because, again, I know the research on restorative practice is nascent in our country at least, in schools in our country, but certainly, um, schools have started to show some research, um, that demonstrate the effectiveness when it comes to addressing discipline disparities, um, school culture, relationship building, um, you know, climate and other areas of discipline. So I think that because this is such a pervasive issue in our district that we have not gotten a handle on, this is not the time to pull back on that work. Um, you know, I don't think, I'm, I'm really concerned about sort of normalizing. Um, not that any of us are happy or content or in any way, um, unconcerned about the discipline disparities. Um, but I do think that it, this area is just as, um, important as the work that we should be doing around mental health, um, support, substance abuse, um, you know, these issues that you bring about, so that you discuss. So I do think that both of these areas are, you know, very, very important and prevalent, um, pressing for our school district. And I think my concern for our school district. And I think my concern, as I express, um, is that I expressed earlier, I think in a, a few meetings back, when Dr. Nikosia mentioned that perhaps administration was thinking about, um, possibly uh, not filling the Dean of RP role. I expressed my concerns then that, you know, I didn't think that consolidation was the way to go to strengthen our work around RP. And my position on that really hasn't changed. I do appreciate some of the data you're just kind of citing here, Mark, but I mean, today, we really don't have, um, there hasn't been a presentation of the evaluate, any kind of evaluation of our uh, restorative practice work. And so I think that's something that, you know, would be great to have, just, you know, for our own, you know, purpose as a board, um. And, you know, generally speaking, for the administration, obviously, to be able to look back on, on the data to see, well, what act, what impact um, on suspensions and discipline, um, community, uh, school culture do, can be traced to or possibly correlate with our um, RP work. And then, you know, also thinking about the fact that we know, I just was reading some research, uh, literary view of restorative practices program, restorative practice programs in schools throughout the country. Um, and one of the key findings in terms of implementation and sustenance, uh, sustaining, I should say, and success or effectiveness with um, RP work, uh, time and strong investment in professional development uh, were huge key components. So time meaning several years, many years, three to five years of at least um, beginning to get into deep work in this area. Um, you know, two of the past, you know, three years, we were in a pandemic and weren't really doing that work. Um, so I just, I for one would like to um, learn a little bit more about, again, where we are in terms of what has been done with our RP practices around professional development the past few years. Probably the year or two before the pandemic and last year, um, you know, what is the data um, on what, what's been done? How many, you know, RP circles, how effective they've been, um, you know, feedback from teachers, uh, it, progress monitoring data. I think that would be really helpful before I could feel comfortable saying, okay, yes, we're, you know, we can consolidate this work um, under this larger umbrella. I mean, of, of the SAC role. Yeah, I do think that we should be thinking about um, maintaining strong programs uh, by having dedicated staff for each of these important areas of work.
Monique, thank you. Um, and, and I wish we, I wish we could. It's, it's just so, so costly to have, you know, two,
Yeah.
two people in those positions.
Um, I, I will say that I have, um, I know that there are districts that, uh, or schools that have leveraged Title One funding for, um, to, to fund a D, a Coordinator of RP or Manager of RP or other such um, position. Um, grant funds are certainly can be pursued for that. Uh, Keen University, well, they're actually, I, I just noticed that they're actually running a um, restorative justice training program that perhaps, um, you know, they may uh, provide scholarships for. So I think just with the will and the time and the investment of energies to seek out these resources and funding, um, potential, uh, potential streams of funding. Uh, there's, there is likely a way to maintain or to fill our role of a Dean of RP or Coordinator of RP or whatever you want to call it here. I just don't want, I, I just don't want us to not have that conversation and to have more data in this decision.
Thank you. Um, Monique, thanks. Um, uh, we have three hands up in, in my screen in order. Marilyn was first, Michelle, and then Anne. So Marilyn, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, so I mean, I appreciate all that Monique saying, and Monique and, and Dr. Kozia and I had also had a conversation, you know, before this board vet, in before this board vet meeting to kind of also talk about some of these things. And some of the suggestions that, that we came up with, or at least I thought we kind of came up with, they all cost money. So I'm not sure where they head, but um, so that we can continue to grow the uh, restorative practices work. We talked about possibly bringing in the uh, consultant that we had initially, of course, whose name again popped out of my head. Monique, what was that name?
Anne Gregory.
Anne Gregory, sorry. I wrote it down and still don't remember. You know, planning to bring her in to kind of evaluate where we are in the district and where we need to, what would help us uh, moving forward. Um, and I think Dr. Nikosia had talked about, or we had asked her to kind of maybe going back to Julie Luxa to see how many people have been trained and at what level. And so I just want to get some of the data that Monique's talking about, so that we don't drop it by any means, but we look at how we can support it going forward to keep it going in a better way that will be that, where we can't afford two positions, but we can, we, we've got to figure out a way to how to keep it going. And those were a couple of suggestions we had.
Marilyn, thank you. Um, Michelle?
Um, so I just wanted to maybe clear something up that I was confused about, because I think when Dr. Nikosia had talked to us about the position of um, you know, kind of overlapping the dean position of restorative practices and the SAC. I think we had actually discussed like how the Dean of Restorative Practices position was more about um, finding the right person to fill the role that had been, you know, um, kind of not really defined, I guess. Maybe in a job description, it was a little bit loosely defined. So, I mean, I was getting concerned, actually, Monique, when I was listening to you talk, because I was thinking like, oh my God, are we like getting rid of restorative practices? It was a little bit of a, you know, a shock. So I just want to make sure that, um, you know, I, I was never under the impression that we were getting rid of restorative practices. I just thought we were kind of tightening up. Um, you know, maybe streamlining, I guess is a better word, our um, our approach to restorative practices, being that we have had some training. So we're not completely beginners in restorative practice, but there's a whole lot of room to grow that I understood that the person who would be ideal for the SAC position and how we were going to write or how Dr. Nikosia was going to write up the job description, was going to be very specific about meeting the needs of the restorative practice program. So I was, I was not at all thinking that we were minimizing or um, dismissing any of the important work that Juliana has done so far. So I, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not suggesting that, not to interrupt you. I was just suggesting that I don't agree with the idea of, um, yeah, I know that we're not throwing, tossing to the wind the restorative work. I did get that part. I just, um, you know, I am concerned about um, the decision to consolidate these roles under one title. Um, and with the person who does just have, you know, some initial training in restorative practices, certainly is not, um, you know, in-depth in terms of the level of knowledge and expertise in that area, and then expect them to, um, you know, carry on uh, in fulfilling these of someone who would be considered a, you know, coordinator or manager or dean of RP. Um, so yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify. I got that too. I was not confused about. I know we still want to do the work. Um, I just don't, I personally don't agree with us moving towards a consolidation plan. We don't have enough data on, um, and I haven't seen, you know, sort of a date, enough data on evaluate, evaluating what we've done thus far and um, you know, yeah, and the effectiveness of what we've done or lack thereof, uh, and having a little more clarity around that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm collecting more data for sure. And I, I just want to clarify that I was the one that was confused. I wasn't thinking you were confused. Um, that I was worried that I misunderstood. So, I mean, that said, I do feel like I can say that I, I have noticed there's a general consensus of concern among board members. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we are concerned with keeping up the good work that we've done with restorative practice, but that it's kind of, it's not progressed, I guess, enough in the ways that we would like to see it amongst um, the faculty perhaps. Not so much the students, but like, I, I mean, I just, um, I guess I feel like there's a lot of decisions to make in terms of which direction we go. And at this point, it seems as if the SAC was someone who could take on that additional role, because this role unfortunately was not really all that big, wasn't big enough. That's what I was hearing.
Michelle, thank you. Um, Anne, you're next, and then Allison.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for the background and, and all the uh, very incisive comments. Um, I, I mean, I, I just have to reiterate, I have to agree with Monique here. Um, she and I talked about it and I had some kind of uh, amorphous concerns that she was able to crystallize for me. Um, I do think that I, I think the person that we're, we're considering hiring to the SAC, it looks highly qualified, like a wonderful uh, person for that position. But I am not, I, I would not have discontinued the, our, the dean. I would have worked on the job description. I could make it more focused. If there was a problem with the way the position was being implemented, um, I'm surprised to hear it. I mean, I, I do not know that. Um, as I think to myself about sort of what is, you know, the superintendent's prerogative, what is our prerogative, this does seem to me to be something that, that you know, the board has, has really prioritized over the years, you know, focusing on restorative practices and focusing not just on HIBs, but on discipline issues and how to handle them. Um, and I thought that we were pleased with the way that was going. I know it hasn't, um, our, our disciplinary reports have been uh, pretty dramatic lately. Um, but I, it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me to discontinue a position that is so identified with one of our primary board goals. Um, I, I understand that the functions of the Dean of Restorative Practice, as we understood them, are going to be distributed through other positions. Like I guess Sean, uh, Sean Harris, our, our Student Safety Officer, I'm sorry, I have the wrong title. Um, he'll be taking over some of those restorative practice roles. I guess he's had uh, some workshops on restorative practices. And some of them will go to the uh, Student Assistance Counselor. But it seems to me that if we want to refocus and make the program better, the way to do that is not by di- discontinuing the position. Um, it's by making the position better, you know, better training, personnel that fit the position. Um, I just hate to see us, just as we're having, you know, I, just as countries around, you know, schools around the country are having lots of issues of behavior problems right now, lots of conflicts, lots of trouble transitioning back into uh, normal school life. I don't think now is the time to, to drop this position. I mean, so I, I anticipate, I'm going to listen to everybody else's comments, my vote will probably be to abstain. And I intend that to indicate that I, I, you know, I'm, I'm delighted to hire this, this proposed SAC. But if it's coming at the expense of the restorative practices dean, you know, I, I can't really endorse that. Um, I, I think, yeah, it's true, we don't have the money for both. But that's because we decided, because it was decided to hire a substance abuse, a student assistance counselor instead of a restorative practices dean. Um, I would like to, I, ideally, I would want to reexamine that. Um, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Um, Allison?
Um, I'd like to weigh in here as someone who has this role um, for a similar sized population. Um, so I conduct, I am the restorative coordinator um, for my building, which has twelve hundred students, the size of our district. And I am a part-time position. Um, I, while I'm, I, while I do think that the position is important, a lot of what I do is contingent on the teams that I work with. So I don't believe that by not filling a position at this moment, we are not going to still continue working with restorative practice on all of the other team levels. Restorative practice is only as good as your teams are putting forth the effort. Um, the fact that we had a position that people were unsure of filling right now means that we need to better define the, the position itself. But also define what our focus for restorative practices is going to be, how it's been altered by the pandemic and what we need moving forward. Um, I don't see it as, like, that our restorative practice program is going to take a hit. As long as, as a board, we continue pushing for seeing data, having a team kind of look at this. There are several types of teams that can be um, constructed. There's a restorative justice action team. There's restorative practice equity teams. There are models out there that Dr. Nik- the Dr. Nikosia and her leadership team can kind of create in order to identify and self-assess where we are in the moment and where we can move forward. Um, that's kind of where I feel like you'll, in the future, be able to identify what, who exactly and what exactly do we want this role? How do we want it to work? And how do we want it to work district-wide? Because what was happening is things were getting skewed just to the middle school, when really this needs to be a district-wide vision. Um, so I just wanted to add my two cents as someone who does this. Um, but I also don't want to um, not give credit to the administration who has been and will continue implementing these practices with the students that they see. So as a board, we're going to see very quickly in September, October, November, how these issues are being handled with a restorative approach. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Uh, yeah, just briefly, maybe I misunderstood. Um, I, I didn't think it was that we're not comfortable filling the position right now. I thought we were making a decision not to fund this position. We were going to go in a different direction with the SAC, which is, you know, it can be good or bad. But I just want to make sure I understand what the decision is that we're making. Am I correct? We're not just holding off on filling the position today? We're, we're not going to fill it while we have a SAC?
Well, I just want to, I'm, I'm just going to weigh in here. We actually don't have a job description for the role. So to Alice's point, what we had discussed was, we need to look at, and the whole point of having a consultant come in to do a program evaluation of this is to then give us the feedback, what, what is it that we actually need? And how do we put that into practice? And what, what, you know, under our budget and what we have? Is it that we actually need this position? What's the job description? What's the evaluation tool, which we don't have? What are all the pieces of that puzzle? Unfortunately, things were put into place without a strong foundation, right? And so though that, that stuff on, kind of crumbled because there was no foundation. So I want to bring in somebody that can help us really look at, okay, how many people were trained? What does it look like? Where, where are the, where are our gaps? And then what are the recommendations that we can do? What are the recommendations that we can do under our, the constraints of our budget to, to move it forward? So there's, nobody's throwing it out. It's that you're, we're all talking about hiring for a position that we don't even have a job description for. So right now, we can get, we can continue to still do our work, plus the work of having some substance abuse counseling done, and look at how we want to move the district forward with RP.
I, I want to. Thank you for weighing in. If I could just finish my comments, that'd be great. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
So, oh.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just want to finish. I mean, I, my understanding is that I, I would have preferred that we did this before we decided we were going to commit funds to something that's incompatible with the position. I mean, I, I get that we want to like get lots of data and that's great, and find out who's been trained. But I, I wish that we had known who has been trained before we decided we're going to put funds somewhere, which as Mark explained, is going to make it impossible for us to hire a restorative practices dean. I mean, that was a decision made before we did all this analysis. Um, you know, I understand the decision has been made, but I, I would like to not proceed that way moving forward. I mean, this is sort of an area of critical, critical board priority. You know, Allison, you mentioned, and this is quite right, that, you know, board members need to continue pushing, you know, for restorative practices. That's what I'm doing right now. I, I wish that we had the dean. Um, that's somebody who can head this up. We don't even have a part-time person who's sort of designated restorative practice coordinator. I mean, we have a job description now where she's going to work on, you know, she's going to do restorative practices. She's going to work on it in addition to her other responsibilities. And I guess Sean Harris will also be implementing restorative practices, and maybe he'll be leading the district in some ways in that regard. Um, I, I don't know, sort of if he's already, I mean, I, I'm sure he's been trained to some extent, because he deals with student conflict. Um, so, I don't know, this doesn't seem to be the prime, this, to me, this does not seem to be the time to put money towards a position that makes filling the restorative practices dean impossible without first doing all of this, this investigation that we absolutely should do. You're absolutely right. Um, and I also, I, I, I just want to note my discomfort with the fact that I'm hearing from Michelle and I'm hearing from Allison that I guess there were problems with the position, and there was a feeling that it was kind of not coming together, wasn't, I mean, I, I know I missed a couple of meetings, but I just wish I had heard something more about that.
Yeah, Anne, I, I want to jump in and say, you did miss a big discussion in the last um, private session on this topic. So.
I was at the last private session about the per- particular. There was a discussion about this position not working out?
Yes.
Um, be- before we go into that, there are people who've had hands up. Could we, could we um, talk, uh, the, the, I, I want to say one brief thing about it. Which I think, wait, which I think is, is, is certainly clear to me and maybe to others, maybe not to others. When, when, when the HIB reporting came out and we had all of those HIBs, dozens and hundreds of HIBs, um, Scott created the position, which was an unusual position, Dean, Dean of Restorative Practices, as opposed to what we had at many, many years, this uh, a substance abuse or a student assistance counselor. And there was no job description. The reporting of that person was very unclear. Who, who did that person report to? I imagine if we ask nine of us, we would get the six different answers. And we've had two people in that position over the last five years resign. We've had two people in that position over the last five years resign. So perhaps it wasn't well done. I don't want to say more than that because I, I don't want to. Talk about past administrations.
I mean, one left the district, Mark, Ma- Maureen left the district. I think that's publicly known. I, she didn't quit restorative practices because it was a bad job description. And, you know.
But she may be, but, well, I can't say why she quit.
Well, maybe she did. Maybe she quit and moved to a different.
Maybe, or may, maybe, or maybe not, and maybe we could have a private conversation about that, but. We aren't dropping it. I mean, this is part of the description of the student assistance counselor. I think we do need a report. Once the, once the consultant comes in. To find out what we have, what we've done, where we're at. I thought the numbers, the data that I cobbled together. Was, was. Pretty interesting. I, I haven't shared it with Christina yet. I I shared it with one other board member. With, with Chris, Chris and I were talking about it. So I, I think. The training of the staff in restorative practices. Has helped the district. Not only in the middle school, other folks around the district. But. I, I, I'd like to move on to Marilyn and then Monique, wait, Marilyn, Monique, and then Michelle. That's the order the hands came up. So Marilyn, you first, please. And then Monique, you, you, you'll go next.
Just, just real quick, I just don't want us to lose sight of the, the need that we were looking at as well, which is the high number of substance abuse issues. Going on, at least in my short time on the board, so that this position was, that was a need. We didn't like drop the, the RP. We looked at this other need and limited resources. And I think that the hope is, or the plan will be that restorative practices will get supported in other ways going forward. But that the substance abuse was a critical need. And if we. Don't move in that area now and we potentially lose a good person and lose the, you know, the. Finding someone, you know, some months down the road will be more challenging, then substance abuse issues will. Also not get addressed. We were hoping the teachers. You know, are gonna continue to work on restorative practices and we'll get them the support and training. But we don't have anybody at this point, you know, on the substance abuse issue, and that's a big deal as well. So I just wanted to like not lose sight of that piece in the. Maybe this process wasn't perfect. I, I certainly could agree with that, you know, it's clearly this discussion is important, but. It is, well, the decision is being, the recommendation is based on a real clear need. You know, a different type of need. So, anyway.
Marilyn, thank you. Monique?
Yeah, thanks Marilyn. I agree with you a hundred percent that there is clearly a need and I again just wanted to emphasize that. Both areas of need are are very pressing and I just find it. Um, difficult to be. Boxed into this, having to make this decision, as you said, just a procedural. Problems to how we got to this point. I want to, you know, just highlight that we. So we can avoid this, you know, happening in the future. This whole idea of evaluating now our program came out of a discussion we had just a few days ago. As opposed to before the decision was made not to fill the dean of RP position. And instead, you know, go. Put that funding towards the SAC position. I will just say to Mark's. A point, one of the points you made, that it's unusual to have a dean of RP. There really isn't anything unusual about having. Someone as a program coordinator, coordinator, manager of an RP program. That's very common practice. In schools that have restorative practice programs. Restorative practice itself. Certainly may not be practiced on a wide scale in schools throughout the United States, although it is growing and it's used and it's prevalent. One of our local school districts here in Montclair, New Jersey instituted a restorative justice program. They have a full-time coordinator. So there's nothing unusual about that. The title dean seems, may seem unusual when it's typically a coordinator or, you know, program.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant. Calling it a dean and not having a job description and not knowing who that person reports to is very unusual.
Yeah, so those sort of administrative issues, I just feel like, you know, wow, again, we're having that conversation now, when if we've been having this conversation earlier. You know, sooner and really working through these issues, then we wouldn't be in a position where we're. Where, or administration, I should say, would not have been in a position where they're thinking that, you know. Well, let's just not even continue with this particular role and let's consolidate or merge under a different position. So. You know, I'm really, I I'm really torn, to be honest with you, as to feeling like, of course, I want to fully support a SAC hire. But I also am feeling like I can't do that without, you know, given that I don't have enough data as to the decision. Or supporting this decision to consolidate the role. And I totally appreciate Allison's perspective, certainly as being someone who practiced. Builds that role in your school, but in terms of our district and all the work that we, well. The strategic planning we've done around it, the discussions in Equity and Excellence that we have had prior, certainly pre-pandemic around our. Strong need for strengthening our RP work. And not at any point did we have this kind of conversation about. That it was sort of floundering, you know, this, this role of the dean of RP, that discussion did not come to our attention. So we, you know, we were not aware as a committee. And I think that that's important also just to point out that, you know, the implementation and evaluation of this work. Fall squarely, I think, in the realm of the Equity and Excellence Committee in terms of, you know, always being an agenda item. It has been in the past anyway. So, you know, I would appreciate that going forward. Because again, you know, this is more than just about HIBs. This is also about our discipline disparities and. The glaring disparities that we see with the disproportionate number of black, Latino students with disabilities that are being suspended. And it's an issue that we, you know, we have to put full resources towards.
Monique, thank you. Michelle? And then maybe after Michelle speaks, we could move on, please.
Yeah, just two different things I wanted to say really quickly. Excuse me. One of them is that. How many years ago? I honestly can't remember at the, at the moment, but. When me and Rob and Ann first ran for the board seat, one of our most important issues that we wanted to. Address was reinstating the SAC position that was rift during a previous administration. That was something that we talked about as, you know. A really important, like, top, top-tier item. And we have definitely seen some fallout since getting rid of the SAC position. In terms of student drug addiction and alcohol abuse, et cetera. So. I kind of just wanted to remind us all of the importance of the SAC position and. Also to say that it is, it is very much related. To discipline issues. If you're dealing with students that have addiction issues. These, these are going to be things that do overlap in terms of the role of the restorative. You know, practice coordinator. Also, there was a discussion. I, unless I'm. Losing my mind, there was a discussion in private session. About a month ago, perhaps, maybe more. On this very topic, and we did discuss how loosey-goosey the job description was. And how it had evolved from the time that the restorative, the dean of restorative practices has, had been a position. It was kind of one of these. Forgive me for saying, but I believe it was one of these buzzword titles. That administration thought was a good idea to put into practice without any idea. What restorative practices really was. As far as I remember. So this was, this was not something that was ever. You know, a position that was. Established in any way. It was constantly evolving. And therefore, it, like, you know, Mark said, this position didn't have anyone. You know, really looking over it. It was on its own. It was kind of its, its own free-floating program. So. I don't think that anyone would want us to get rid of. Restorative practices or the dean of restorative practices, but. There is a budget choice that we have to make at this point. And re-establishing the dean of restorative practices in a proper way. That is, you know, really filling the role in a way that addresses the issues. That would be my ideal. So I'm not saying we have to choose either or permanently, but for now, we do. And it is a tough choice, but I would say that I have been personally. Waiting for the time when we had a SAC reinstated for, I would say, about ten years. And I do think that it is related to this discipline issues. So I don't think this is an either or, black or white issue. I think this. Is an and, you know, kind of. Then and. Issue. It's just that we need to decide, we need to decide the timeliness. Of this procedure in which we, we really put money behind hiring someone. And if we don't even have an established job description or a department. Where this person is a dean, I don't think that it's effective. So I think that we are really just. Putting labels on things that don't have the efficacy we would like them to.
I'm sorry, I just want to, I agree with you on a lot of it. So I just have to say, because this characterization of, I'm confused about your, the way you're characterizing. Kind of this loosey-goosey approach to the dean of restorative practices, because I know in discipline study group committee meetings and. Prior Equity and Excellence Committee meetings, the way it was presented to us, it's back. Gosh, before pandemic times, when Dr. Taylor was at the helm and still here. You know, it wasn't this sort of loosey-goosey approach. There were actually resources invested into this person fulfilling that role. So their profession, you know. Building up her professional development, but she already, you know, had some and added enhancing that. Having the consultation time with Dr. Gregory. Yeah, and really, not just throwing a label and a title out there just to say it exists, but there were actually resources and energies put towards it. So I just wanted to, and I'm not saying that's what you are saying that there weren't, but that's sort of the message that I got. So I just want to make some clarifications there. That we're characterizing what was done to the extent that I know. Pandemic years, so.
We had the Institute of Restorative, International Institute.
One thing, but the fact is there were plenty of resources initially, and I'm sure there was a drop-off. Particularly once we got into the pandemic, but there certainly were resources and efforts put towards, you know, that role and making that role as impact. Possible. That was my.
We had a very expensive consulting relationship with the International Institute of Restorative Practices. And that was a multi-year thing, I believe, that we had them coming in and training. So we had formal, a formal training program that was in place.
I do remember that and I do appreciate that. I just want to say that as it was laid out by the administration at the time. It was loosey-goosey. That's what I was referring to. There was a buzzword. And then there was action in terms of training, but I don't really think that the. Effort was put into the structural organization that needed to be there because there was no oversight. So, yes, there was training, yes, good people in the position, but I know we're asking for data. We don't have it because there was never that initial organization. And that's what I'm saying, we're, we're lacking in this conversation, is that we're forgetting that there's a lot of time unaccounted for. And yes, there were good things done, but I don't know they will ever really get the data that we are looking for because of. Previous administrations that did not set up that initial organization.
I mean, I just have no idea if Ms. Muntz was recording data and what she did. I mean, I wouldn't expect to have that information because I'm not, you know, not in the administration. I mean, I do remember at the beginning, just a second please. Sorry, sorry, I had some folks in the background. I don't know who they are, strangers. Family members. I mean, I remember at the beginning, we got a lot of feedback about what. The person in the position was doing and the kinds of circles that were being held. Always added to our discipline reports. I agree, it should have been firm, there should have been a job description. I mean, obviously, right? There should have been a clear reporting structure. My understanding was that there was at least a, an indirect reporting structure to the principals of the two schools for which the person worked. I understand that's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be much clearer chain of command, but. As far as I know, there, there were people that were working with this person, and that's why we would have it on the discipline report, you know. Meets with so-and-so, meets with so-and-so, then refer to the dean of restorative practices. So I, 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 my impression of it was that it was not quite so amorphous and time unaccounted for. As your perception might be, Michelle, but I. You know, I respect that we have different perceptions. I would like to know more much earlier.
Let, let us move on, please. I think we've all had our chances to talk. Go ahead.
I know, Mark, I'm sorry. Last, very last thing, because I know Dr. Nocia, when we spoke. You, Marilyn and I, we, you, you had mentioned that there, you were gonna talk to Ms. Lusford about some of the data that she had collected. So I'm not, I know you probably don't have that this evening, but I think that that's something that I know you had. Discuss, looking into and that's, you know, perhaps that would be helpful as well to present what she can share with you.
Yeah, she's a ten-month employee, so all our ten-month employees don't come back until September. So unfortunately, she's unavailable until at least the fall to. To contact for more information. Right, okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for this discussion. I would say this is a real board business, you know. And.
We need to do it earlier next time.
Well.
I mean, we're discussing it, someone's already on the table to be hired.
I understand, but this is not dropping restorative practices in the district. I, I don't want to go on with this discussion. We're not dropping it. It's part of the job description. I would like to see a report. On what we should do in the restorative practices. If that means a coordinator of restorative practices. Part of someone's job, for instance, I'm sure we could find money for that. Linda, you didn't hear that, but I'm sure we could find money for it. But it is part of, it is part of the SAC job. And we're not dropping it as an initiative for the district. And I hope we approve this position, this person. And, and have something in place for early in the year, early in September. So let us move on. Chris, you have the floor. I don't know how much, I don't know how much of the agenda you want to go through, but it's your call.
Okay, well, items, item one is a memorandum of understanding with the union about experience for Schedule B. Two are board, board appointments. Teacher and Capola, young maiden, Vobianco and Peterson. Three is a, is a termination, unfortunately. Four through seven are resignations, some. Who have been with us for a long time. So thanks very much to Harper and. Dr. Gokurmac Marcus and Gonzalez Goldstein. Eight is approval of the lead counselor. Nine, as we already discussed, making full-time U.S. Safety Specialist. Ten is the approval of the. Student Assistance Counselor, who, who, who looks to have a very strong background. Eleven is an elementary teacher. Twelve through. Sixteen, seventeen. Our approval of care professionals, including our friend Ruth Byer is item seventeen. Eighteen is a guide adjustment. Nineteen, twenty hours, twenty-one additional instructional assignments for staffing needs. Twenty-two is approval of the Schedule B positions. Twenty-three, twenty-four stipending planning hours. Twenty-five, the child study team meetings, staffing. Twenty-six, the STAR program. Twenty-seven, the preparation hours. Twenty-eight also. Twenty-nine, the mentoring. Thirty, thirty-one, approval of training and workshops, thirty-two curriculum writing, something we have to do. Thirty-three, the change of hours for the teen center. Thirty-four, a unification project for Bartle, thirty-five volunteers. And thirty-six, the approval of an after-school program assistant for Irving Primary School. Any questions about the remaining items? Okay, back to you, Mark.
Chris, thank you. So I'll review policies and regulations. A policy is being abolished and that's school-sponsored publications. There are foreign policies that have come up for first reading, which the policy committee met and discussed last month. There's, and they're all related to, to law or, or, well, all related in one way or another to New Jersey or federal law. The high school student representatives to the Board of Education, that was passed by the legislature. And so we had to modify the, the, the. The, the, the policy on this. But in, in real terms for our policy, we're gonna continue with what we've done. There are changes to the law on, laws on quorum, so that was modified. The Board of Education website accessibility, those are no longer optional. It was, it used to say, as good as you can make it, now it says you have to be accessible. It was, it used to say, as, as good as you can make it, now it says you have to be accessible. And then the Every Student Succeeds Act is a name change in the law. And I can't remember all the acronyms that the federal government has used all these years. But it's the latest name and that we had to go through that policy. We didn't, but I mean, we had to review the policy and get all of the name changes in to match the current legislate, you know, the current state of the law. And then we have two policies for second reading, the, the HIBB policy and the Law Enforcement Agency Cooperation Policy. So, any questions or comments?
I did have one, I raised my hand. The, the, the website, the Board of Education website, actually, I've always wanted to ask about, you know. Who's, who does that and could that be improved in the way it looks and whatever, but now my question is, is it actually, are we actually having accessible website? Or is that work that needs to be done to match the. The, the state law on that?
Well, I, I, I know, I know a fair amount, a bit about it, because I. Previous administration, I kinda had to review all of that, so we buy a website template. That we fill in, where, you know, where it says district, we put in Highland Park, you know, this goes back probably fifteen or twenty years. And that, that website template that we buy and which we use. That. Guarantees or purports to be accessible. Way you get into trouble is if you, like, you put a picture up and the picture doesn't have the words that make it accessible. Or lots of other things that when we modify it, we have to do it with accessibility in mind. Not that the website changes so much, but. I initially, over the years, worked with Dr. Taylor on that, you know, talked to him about that. And now I think, Dr. Nocia, you're, you're doing that at this point.
Yes, I'm the webmaster.
I didn't realize that was one of your jobs as well.
We don't have anybody in-house that, we don't pay anybody in-house to do it. So, yeah, Scott was doing it before, again, I've, you know. Money's tight, so I have no problem helping where needed.
Okay, Anne?
We obviously appreciate that, Dr. Nocia, though I wish it wasn't so, yeah, I remember talking with Dr. Taylor about that too. And, I mean, the consensus then in our discussions was that it's very difficult to make it accessible, you know, in a, in sort of the way you're supposed to do it. And we also had concerns that the, the template company, whatever it is, School Messenger, or whatever, whatever. That they were not doing a very good job of it, and I can kind of imagine that just because the website is very difficult to navigate, even. If you don't have an accessibility issue. This is not to say anything critical of Dr. Nocia, it's always been this way, it's been this way for years and years and years. It's very hard to find basic information and we get that feedback from the public all the time. So I wonder, should we be investing in a, in an accessibility audit of the website? How do we, how do we address this? I don't think Dr. Nocia should be going through every page and, you know, trying to see if the alt text is there and. You know, checking to see if the, if the PDF has been OCR'd and that's not really, that's not really possible.
The, the firm that we buy this from actually has a tool. Which I ran personally, and I expected it to be terrible. And it's not, but it's not perfect, and if you find things, you have to fix them. It's, it's work, I mean, we could hire a person, you know, part-time or a firm, or we could do audits on it. But again, I, it's. And, and I would say, no, no site is perfect, you know, new things come on and it. And people forget to do the proper notation on it. But I leave that to the administration to, to. To evaluate. Chris, you had your hand up, though.
Oh, Monique also, by the way.
Had her hand up first, so.
Monique?
Oh, yeah, thanks, um, thanks, Mark, I was actually gonna ask about the accessibility audits, I know that I had asked about this a while back. Sometime during the school year and you mentioned that one was done, but perhaps, I'm not sure exactly how long ago that was.
It's a few years.
Okay, because I know I had ran my own little accessibility check using the free online tool and found, certainly there were a quite a. Good number of red flags for like low-vision accessibility that, you know, as you said. Are not uncommon, however, can and should be fixed, so, yeah, since it's been a number of years, I was certainly me in support of hopefully the administrative. Administration looking towards having an updated accessibility audit. And then hopefully finding a way to, so that this does not fall on your shoulders, Christina, certainly not the work of making the site accessible. That should not fall on your shoulders at all, but I think that this should be a priority.
Chris?
Oh, I, I just wanna say, you know, we, we, we have the same problem at Rutgers all the time. Usually they hires, I mean, I, I was also the webmaster when it was department chair. Usually we hire students, I don't know, I guess we can't hire students in this situation. Thing, there must be something similar we can do with hiring sort of young people who are very tech savvy.
For the webmaster part, right, not the accessibility?
For both, for both, because the, the people who put the stuff that violates the accessibility standards. Tend to be people who are just in a real rush, you know. And, and, and for, for, you know, either post-PDF or they forget to label the photographs or figures.
Right.
And people have to chase after them and get them to make it compliant.
I mean, if we could invest like in a yearly audit or something, you know, so that like at least once a year, we bring it up to date. I mean, better, better we have like a dedicated person that does this all the time, but you know, I mean, that's not possible. This should be done at least on a yearly basis, maybe a six-monthly basis. I'm sure the board would support that expenditure if it was brought to us by the administration, at least I, this board member would.
And, and I would say, having personally been responsible for that myself, it's not very recent, it's more than ten years ago. It's just, it's just an impossible, as Chris said, it's an impossible job. You know, someone rushes, puts something out, the picture looks great, marketing did it. And it doesn't have the, doesn't have the words and it leads off to the wrong place and it's impossible, it's very hard. Michelle, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that maybe, maybe this is a job for. One of our committees to take on. I don't know if it's personnel or equity and excellence, but maybe we could put it on the calendar somehow as board members, like. Some kind of audit that we do on the website as part of our board work, I don't know, because we need more work to do.
We need tech, we need someone in technology to do it, Monique, you had your hand up.
I was just gonna say, definitely having a dedicated. Someone who is experienced and knowledgeable of doing web accessibility audits. And I know.
I think, I think the firm that we buy the website from, oh, go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know if I was clear, I'm sorry. I meant for us to just like put a reminder on our board work as something to check up on regularly. To make sure that the accessibility issues are addressed, you know, that an audit is done. I wasn't, I wasn't proposing doing the work, for sure.
Good.
Good, okay, thank you, yeah, that's wonderful, thank you, Michelle. And then I just wanted to add to Mark's comment, I understand exactly where you're coming from with Mark with just expressing the amount of work that it does take to maintain accessible website. But it certainly is doable.
It's doable.
Resources, I just don't wanna send the message that, you know, this is impossible.
It's not impossible, it's completely doable. Christina and Linda, maybe you could investigate the firm that we purchased the site from, the template and all. I recall, vaguely recall, when I read their very large manual. On accessibility, you know, among other things, accessibility. I, if I'm not mistaken, they could even do an audit for us. And even perhaps correct it, and. We're not in the, I mean, we're not, we're not in the usual very bad, usual state of having no money at the moment. We have a little bit of money, and if we could get them or someone else in and spend a modest amount of money. To do an audit and do the repairs, you know, required by the audit. It seems to me that that would be money well spent. And we don't have to do it, you know, every six months or whatever, but we can do it once and then, and then review it again. And there are, you know, there are tools we can run, in fact, again, they provide a tool. Christina, is that something you could look into?
Yeah, Linda and I'll look into, we'll first look into the contract we have with School Messenger and see what that affords us. First, first place, and then we can definitely reach out to them and get some, some prices. If they could do the work and then we could reach out, I'll reach out to other directors of technology to see who they use and we can, you know. Review some, some prices, maybe in finance or facilities.
Great, thank you. Great. Okay, any other questions or comments for policy? And, and I, I didn't mention earlier that both finance and policy are meeting this week. We have meetings tomorrow is finance at five o'clock. And then on Wednesday, we have a policy at five o'clock, and I believe that's just one policy that. Member of the public asked us to look at.
Correct.
Yeah, so that should be a short meeting. So, with all of that said, we go back to number. Going through my notes here, to number nine, which is public comment. And then from public comment, we're gonna have our board voting session. So, I'll, I'll read number nine, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. And has reserved this time for your comments, board policies one, six, four, and one, six, seven. Establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings, so just raise your hand. Or, and we, there's not so many people here, we'll, we'll be able to see your hand up. And I see Jennifer Altman, your hand is up, so you have the floor.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't find the hand up, so I did the wave, I guess. Jennifer Altman, thirty-one Walter Avenue. One of your regulars, I, I always enjoy listening to you guys while I sit and clean the kitchen or fold the laundry. I, I just had a comment, I wasn't even gonna speak today, but I, I just wanted to make a comment as a public person, I don't know if it'll. Mean anything, in that discussion of the SAC coordinator and restorative justice. I don't know what we're gonna call them, coordinator, dean, or whatever we'll call them. I have no comment except for, for those positions that I hope you have enough money to hire amazing people, because obviously the. Our K through twelve kids are struggling in all of those arenas now like never before, and obviously it affects their ability to. Learn and go through an education, my only comment is, sort of building on what Michelle said. I remember almost ten years ago, sitting in Bartle at one of those meetings in the Bartle Auditorium. Till, I don't know, one in the morning, and. The one thing I will take away, well, I should say, one of the things I took away from that a decade ago. And I had a child, I think, in daycare and wanted Bartle, and now the Bartle one's off to college, but. Was, when that SAC position was ripped. I have never seen the testimonies from students like I saw that day of what it had meant. What that person did for them, for their life, and it wasn't. Very few talked about substance abuse, so I know it's, I'm sure it was tied in, and I know. Dr. Nocia, it sounds like you have a great candidate, but what, what really impressed me was. It changed my life, it saved me, I would have never finished high school. I would not still be living with my family now, I mean, I could go on and on, so. So I'm pleased that the position is coming back again, not, not in any sense that I don't also hope. This position of restorative justice, but I hope that when we hire this person. They have the potential to change lives like that person did, that, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you. And any, any other members of the public, it's your time to speak. Okay, so, seeing no hands, we're gonna move on to board action items. Which is moving the, the agenda items, so Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction, please?
Yes. I would like to move items one through three.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Linda, could you do the roll call?
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Gi Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Levich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move items one through seventeen in finance, do, do I have a second? Thank you. Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Gi Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Levich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Chris, could you move personnel?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through thirty-six.
I'll second. Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, on items one to nine, abstain on ten, and yes to eleven through thirty-six.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes, to all except ten, abstain on ten, please.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes, yes.
Ms. McFadden-Gi Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Levich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And I'll move policy. Items one through three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Too many seconds, I couldn't tell. Two, okay, could, could, Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Gi Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Levich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, so not being president, but, but presiding over this meeting, I have no president's report, I. Marilyn, do you have anything? Okay.
Well, actually, like I say, I will, I will use that moment to remind everybody who has not done their board self-evaluation. That I really would like, when we meet at the end of the month, that, that I'd like to share a draft of board goals. And I wanna take them from the self-evaluation. I'll draft it, send it out to you guys, and, you know, work on it, but I'd like to have as many, a majority at least of our opinions. So, I'll use president's report to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Does anyone have old business? Does anyone have new business? Okay. So now we have our second public comment period, I'm not gonna repeat the public comment message. If anyone in the public would like to speak, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Okay, seeing, seeing none. I'd like to move to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a goo- good evening, everyone.
Good, everyone.